What are we? Or is that where?
He comes with the last.
Yeah, because we were in America City, 2008, American City. Okay, all right.
T E M, Pro Tem.
Everyone ready? Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for July 17th. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm always over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, would you please note that all commissioners are here with the exception of Chairman Slosser and Vice Chair Peters. We're going to move on to the minutes. I see that there is a correction to the minutes for June 19th. Are there any other additions or corrections? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Short and second by Commissioner Barnes. Can I have a vote? Do we have to vote on this? They have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. If there is anyone here in the crowd that would like to make a public comment that is not discussing something that's on the agenda, it's a non-agenda item, please fill out a card and hand it to our secretary stating your name and your address. Seeing none, moving on. Okay, disclosure of ex parte communication. Any? None? Okay, moving on to old business. Ms. Wilkins? Did I miss something?
I'm under new.
Oh, you're under new?
Aren't you?
Oh, okay. Well, you're first under new.
Oh, you're first under new.
There is no old and we're on to new.
Thank you Chairman and members of the Commission. I just wanted to give you a brief update on how the general plan update is going. The general plan committee meetings have been going very well. We've had a couple of light meetings. In June, we did a tour of city facilities and then July, we canceled the meeting to give a little bit of a break, but staff made ourselves available. I did pass out the first chapters that we have done as a draft. You have the introduction chapter, the visioning chapter, and the neighborhoods and housing chapter. We also put this on our website, Goodyear connects dot com, so that the general public can start looking at it too. So if any of you are interested in reviewing it, you can mark this copy up and bring it to the next commission meeting. You can email me, call me. I'd love to meet with any of you if there's anything you want to discuss, but we just want to give you the opportunity to look at these chapters as we're going and provide comment. I also did want to remind you, hopefully everyone received my email, that we've scheduled a joint work session on Monday, October 21st between the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. This was actually a recommendation by one of the City Council members, Joanne Osborne, who used to be on the Planning Commission and thought it was great the last time they did it during the general plan update and gave both bodies a chance to review the plan and then also discuss how they worked together to implement the plan, discuss a little bit about visioning. It's just a really good opportunity to meet, so please mark that on your calendars and when the time and agenda gets drafted, we'll let you know what's going on with that. But that's the only update I have for you, so I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions? Thank you, Katie.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we're on to case number 13-500-00005. Application for a preliminary plat for the La Privada recommendation. Oh, Brett Birmingham, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. So we have the La Privada preliminary plat. We'll start with an aerial photo here. So as you can see, land uses, well, you might not be able to see it too clearly, but I wanted to mention the land uses surrounding the subject property. To the north is a planned development, Amber Meadows, and also to the north and east, we have unincorporated Maricopa County residential lots that are one to five acres in size. So they're zoned rural residential. To the south of this subject property is Yuma Road alignment and the proposed Basseo Ridge, also referred to as Van Lewen Farms Development. And to the west, Perryville Road and the Town of Buckeye Municipal Planning Area. So you can see the subject property there is outlined in red. The easternmost boundary is 181st Avenue, westernmost is Perryville Road, Jefferson Street to the north, and Yuma Road to the south. And the subdivision plat exhibits, the general plan land use map designates the subject property as low density residential, which is two to four dwelling units per acre. The applicant, who is Sunbelt Holdings, acquired the La Privada property in July of 2010 and is requesting approval of this residential preliminary plat. There's been quite a bit of history. I just wanted to briefly note some of that history. In 2006, the City Council authorized the annexation of La Privada and approved a pre-annexation development agreement. This was with the previous property owner. And they also formalized some of the terms of the memorandum of understanding that was applicable to that area. And the final planned area development and a preliminary plat for La Privada were also approved in 2006. And final plats were submitted to staff for review, but those plats were never pursued to approval due to the downturn in the economy and the housing market. And so the previously approved preliminary plat has expired. It is anticipated that the revised development agreement will be executed by the owner and the city prior to approval of any future final plats, but just a little bit of history. And so back to the active subdivision plat, the applicant is proposing to subdivide 198 acres into 578 single-family lots. There would be five phases proposed, excuse me, five residential parcels to be developed in two phases. And there would be two different lot sizes in this proposed subdivision, one being 60-foot wide lots, which would make lots approximately 7,000 square feet, and then also 70-foot wide lots, which would make 8,750 square foot lots. So the net density of this subdivision is 3.10 dwelling units per acre. And also wanted to note that this project is reserving a portion of a school site that is shared by the La Privada and Amber Meadows Development. So each development would be donating half of the needed acreage for that school site. I'd like to move to a landscaping exhibit, if I could. This isn't the landscape plan for the subdivision plat, it's the landscape plan that was provided with the final plan area development, but I think it helps to show the landscaping in the different lot sizes, just a little bit clearer. There will be, there's proposed to be five entrances into the La Privada development. So there's two off of Harrison Street, there's one here, and then one here. And then there was three located off of 183rd Avenue, so one here, one here, and then another at this point. So the most significant change from the previously approved preliminary plat is the conversion of private streets to public streets, which will have public right-of-way and be maintained by the City of Goodyear. And so a standard city street section is being proposed with a five-foot wide detached sidewalk, providing a five-foot wide landscape strip, which would include street trees between the sidewalk and the curb. So in this development, the applicant is proposing approximately 42 acres, about 20% of open space throughout the development, with each parcel designed around a local park with recreational amenities. So located in the development are six parks, ranging in size from one and a half to 2.75 acres, and there's a variety of amenities that are being proposed here. There will be a homeowners association to maintain all community open space tracks, amenities, right-of-way landscaping, including landscaping between the sidewalk and the curb. There are some revisions to the stipulations that I would like to walk through quickly with you, so I provided you with two staple documents. The first one is two pages and it contains six stipulations. And the second document is all of the stipulations as revised. So just real quickly, stipulation number nine was revised. Apologize for the last-minute corrections. Staff has been working with the legal department, who is also working with the applicant on a development agreement. And so the timing of when the traffic signals would be required was amended here. And so we've updated that in this stipulation number nine. For stipulation number 10, we just added a sentence to the tail end of that stipulation to ensure that the easements would be in an acceptable form when it's received due to previous problems that we've had. Stipulation number eight was made to make a distinction, a clarification, that the HOA would be responsible for the landscaping, for maintaining all roadway, rights-of-way landscaping, except for arterial median landscaping, and this is the part that was changed, including the landscaping area between the sidewalk and back of curb on local streets. So it's to clarify, the HOA is responsible for maintaining that detached landscaping strip. And also a note will be placed on the final plat. Moving on to stipulation 23 and 24, again, receiving direction from the legal department in terms of timing of when, there was a 180-day provision that was added to those two stipulations. Additionally, in stipulation number 23, the last sentence was added, a provision regarding an in-lu payment for a portion of a water line. And finally, stipulation number 25, additional information was provided by the legal department regarding the water and sewer details there. So in conclusion, the proposed preliminary plat is consistent with the development permitted for the property by the La Privada Plan Area Development. In the Goodyear General Plan, the proposed development will also be compatible with the surrounding development and area. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report, including the revisions to the stipulations that I've quickly covered with you. So this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. Also, Mr. Bob Bambauer with Sunbelt is also available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Brett. Any questions of staff? Do you need to ask questions of the applicant, anyone?
Actually, Madam Chairman, I'd like to know, are you okay with all the new stipulations that came forward today?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. May I have an action, a motion to approve case number 13-500-00005 with the revised stipulations?
Chairman, I move that we approve 13-500-00005 with the revised stipulations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hamilton to approve and a second from Commissioner Short. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. To case number 12-500-0006, preliminary plat for the Beck property. And Karen Craver, thank you.
I do have revised stipulations. There's a copy there.
All right.
You wouldn't mind passing them out?
I have no. Okay, to this way, to that way. Okay.
The subject of this preliminary plat is the vacant property immediately east of this municipal complex that we're in tonight. This is where we are located here. The property extends from Van Buren Street on the north to Yuma Road on the south. To the east is APS Maintenance Facility Yard, and then there are scattered industrial properties to the west of Litchfield Road. To the north, across Van Buren, there are also industrial properties here. To the south, across Yuma, is the Phoenix Goodyear Airport. The plat provides for the division of 232 acres into six lots of varying size. The property has been zoned I-1 since 1981, and the plat and subsequent site plans will allow for the development of warehouse and distribution uses and flex industrial buildings like we're in here. The plat also provides for the construction of 143rd Avenue from Van Buren on the north to Yuma on the south. The roadway, along with all the associated landscaping, will be constructed with the first development within the plat. 143rd Avenue, for point of reference, currently extends from Van Buren north into the CTCA site. A traffic signal will also be installed at 143rd and Van Buren with the construction of the roadway, and a second signal will be installed at 143rd Yuma when warranted. Earlier, I handed you some revisions to the stipulations. We replaced stipulation number eight, and the original in your staff report was from residential plat. I apologize for that, was a matter of cutting and pasting from the wrong document. Number 10 had originally been for both traffic signals, both at Van Buren and at Yuma. We needed to separate those out because the one at Van Buren will be constructed initially with the roadway, and the one at Yuma will be constructed when it's warranted. And number 12 just became number 12 because we added in that extra step. So with those final set of stipulations that are attached, pages two and three, we are recommending that you recommend approval of this preliminary plat.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here as well.
Any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chairman, same question, you are okay with the new stipulations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to record, my name is Mike Curly, my address is 3101 North Central, I'm Representative Alver. There's one or two items that we want to talk to the staff after the plan, but generally we're okay, but there's a couple of items that really involve the City Attorney's Office that we're going to discuss with them afterward, but we're generally, we're okay with this language.
So you wouldn't mind us approving it, correct?
As is.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? No? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
All right. It's time to take a vote on the preliminary plat for the, oh, I need a motion. That is correct. I need a motion for the approval of the preliminary plat for the Beck property for case number 12-500-0006.
Move that the Commission approve case number 12-500-0006. Send it forward to the Council with our approval.
Second.
Was that you, Commissioner Bray? Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Short and a second from Commissioner Bray. Let's take a vote, all those.
Was that with the revised stipulations?
Yes, with revised stipulations. I'm sorry, I should have included that. Let's take a vote, all those approve?
Aye.
Aye, any nays? The motion passes, five to zero. Okay. We are now down to staff communications.
Let's see, tonight, did want to tell you about a couple things. One, if you're interested, we expect the draft environmental impact statement for this Sonoran Valley Parkway to be released by BLM this Friday. So if you have trouble sleeping at night and you want to read a nice, long, lengthy document, I encourage you to go onto the website and access it. But it's important because this is the first step in developing a roadway from northern portion of Goodyear down to the Mobile area. And the developer originally had initiated it and funded it, but of course, they disappeared from the scene, and so the city has picked it up and is trying to carry it forward. With any luck, by the end of the year, we'll have a right-of-way permit for a good portion of the right-of-way for it. And it's important because getting a right-of-way through BLM is probably the toughest part of the project, and because without their cooperation, you're dead in the water because you can't condemn right-of-way, you're really kind of at their mercy to authorize it. And without that alignment being fixed, then you can't approach other property owners or anybody else. So it's really the first step in the process. It's going to take, it'll take time. We don't have any construction funds pegged for this yet, but it is, like I said, a first step in getting there. So just wanted to let you know about that. A week from tomorrow, we'll have our quarterly developer advisory forum, where we brief the development community on what's going on and things that we have coming up. We'll be talking to them about a couple of different items. One is the development impact fee, progress on the development impact fee study, which they obviously are all going to be very interested in. We're still working on it. We should have the land use assumptions revised and presented in draft form for comment by the end of the month, and it'll be open for about, for comment for about 45 days in which we can get input on that. And then, let's see, lastly, I wanted to apologize for the situation involving the agenda this month. It's not important, I guess, at this point, to ask what exactly happened, but needless to say, there were some kinks in our system, which prevented us from getting it out in the mail timely manner, so we apologize for that and we'll do our best to do better. The system of getting it out, obviously earlier than Friday afternoon, needs to be approved upon, and we're still trying to do that. But had that occurred, you probably would have got it at least a couple of days ahead of time instead of today. So again, I apologize for that. And we'll do better in the future. So that's all I had.
We aren't going to go back to the old way?
The old way?
You know, the delivery system?
You know, if we had known that it wasn't going to go out in the mail on Friday, then we would have returned to the delivery system.
Okay.
So.
So it's like taking a chance with the post office?
Well, it wasn't entirely the post office's fault.
Oh, okay. So we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, there was some, it was a series of calamities, so.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, Joe, on the BLM portion, I believe on Friday, doesn't that start at 90-day clock for comments?
I believe it is 90 days.
Is the city then planning to do an official comment on that particular project?
Well, we will be commenting on the project as it may be helpful to explain what happens. We're actually the applicant, but in order for the BLM to process our application, they required an environmental impact statement be prepared. So we hired a third-party contractor, environmental consultant, to prepare the EIS. As a matter of fact, the draft document that's coming out on Friday, we haven't seen it yet, even though we paid for the consultant to prepare it. We participated in the development of chapters one and two, but once it got into the alternatives evaluation, we were basically kept out of it. And so, yes, we will have an opportunity to review it and comment it at the same time as the general public. Hopefully, it's going to say what we like it to say, but until we see it, we won't know.
I think it would be nice if staff could share with the commissioners what the points of the city are, so that we could comment as well, if we feel we want to. Because typically, in those BLM processes, the more letters they get, the better it is.
Yeah, that is absolutely correct. I mean, this process is built on participation, and so, and a lot of times, the only participation you get are people who are maybe not in favor of it, and there may be people, we hope they're people, that are in favor of it and will support it, and that they take the time to also submit comments. So I'll definitely share that information with you. There will be two open houses that we have scheduled for August 20th. I believe that's a Tuesday night, and then I think, because we have PNC, I think on Wednesday night. Tuesday night, it's here in Goodyear at Main City Hall. Thursday, the 22nd, it'll be in Maricopa at the Country Club, I believe, is where we're hosting that one. We hosted that one in Maricopa instead of Mobile because the BLM said the last time they hosted a meeting involving the Mobile area, they held it in Maricopa and they had a fantastic turnout, and they had to pack the place. And they were worried that if we held it in Mobile, the only place to do that's the elementary school, and we may exceed capacity there. So it's not that we're trying to bypass our mobile residence, we're just doing it to make it more convenient, hopefully. So yes, I'll pass that information along to you, and it actually is interesting reading. It's, not every page is a thriller, but there is interesting information in there about the area, and then the, obviously, the terms of the assessment of the project. And like I said, we haven't seen which alternate alignment. And like I said, we haven't seen which alternate alignment they've recommended or if they've made a recommendation at this stage.
Okay.
I'm supposed to check on stipends?
Anything else?
Mary Ann was just reminding me that you should have received your stipend checks.
Yes.
So if not, holler.
Okay, anything else?
I did not know we got a stipend check until a few days ago.
When it comes in, that's when I know I have it. That's when I know I have it.
The purpose of the stipend is to recognize not only your services, your time and energy, but also, you know, gas money you may spend in going around and looking at sites. When there's few items on the agenda, it may seem like a lot, but when there's a lot of items on the agenda, you'll be wondering why isn't it more?
Well, thank you. All right, any questions, anything else? Then we're adjourned. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.